Fifty dollars with a possible increase. But it's the same. And then Jones Cat Company, their bid for the first year was eight thousand and then eight five hundred and nine thousand, nine, ninety-five hundred and ten thousand. The last one received was from the Landers Brothers Land of Livestock. Year one was eight, year two eighty-one sixty, year three eighty-three twenty-three, year four eighty-four eighty-nine sixty-six, and last year eighty-six hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. The utilities board recommended awarding a bid to ten eighty.
I'll entertain a motion on this side. Do you have a second? I'll second. No? Any discussion on this side? With that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry them so ordered. There you go, yes. Item two, Mayor Robertson, Mary Sorensen, discussion for possible action, approval of request to waive landfill metal disposal fees for a park plan and the town approved.
My fire unofficial mayor of Rutherford, please, our town council chairman. What we did is we requested a lot that the old timers will be Jack Smith or Staten's gas station or another group. We want to put an old mining equipment display there to complement his fallen miners' memorial. County donated a lot to us, but there's a couple, I think you had a picture I sent it to Jennifer of just the two pieces of metal that the owner had, wrote one text out that they're, we need to haul it off, but we wondered is it made at the dump and that would be taken down there? Because we wanted to start that project and complement our mining history in this area and complement the fallen miners' memorial, which had over six hundred and twenty guys on it.
Thank you, Mrs. Sorensen. And the utility board voted through. They did. Are there any questions for Mrs. Sorensen about this? I say no, I will, and you can motion on this.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it and so ordered.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Item three, Councilman Allworth, discussion for possible action, direction of city staff to prepare a resolution lowering landfill charges for businesses that travel to Ely to provide a service that may not be available in the state of Ely. These businesses must be licensed by the state of Nevada and obtain a city of Ely non-resident business license. What was the finding on the board about this? Do you have a report?
The direction from the utilities board was to have staff look at the fees and the charge to local businesses and then change the resolution and brought before the council that would reflect that. Right now, it doesn't matter what type of an out-of-town business you have, can charge forty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Do you want to offer some explanation?
Yes, but the thrust behind this was, as it says, that there's a service in Ely is somewhat isolated, and we all know that, that's where we live here and we like it here, but some services aren't available. And using the example I brought this up was home inspection. The company came out of Vegas, they're licensed by the state, and licensed by the state, we really don't need a city business license. So they, former residents here, they went ahead and put the business license route. And in doing that, they were assessed a landfill rate of forty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents a month, it comes to five hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year. They were in town possibly twenty-four hours. They stayed in the hotel, ate in the restaurants, they did not generate no landfill. So after looking at that, they were losing money, so they discontinued coming up here. And it gets to an issue of whether it's lawyers, auditors, anybody licensed by the state don't have to have these business licenses in the city. Had to track them down, that's really hard. Home inspectors, inspections, appraisers, HVAC contractors come into town, you see them hanging on the side of the building, they take their, where do they get, and they leave. They're one of the ones who have problems with. But if somebody comes in and wants to play fair with us, get a business license, and we basically tax them six hundred dollars for a licensed landfill rate, they might want to be in town twice. So we got, you know, quite a discussion, you know, about with locals, they pay everything. So they addressed like City Park said, come up with an idea and bring it back to the board to see if there's a way to take, take some of the parker now, I guess, that's here, that come to town, working in the city of Ely.
What's the pleasure of the board on this side?
I had, actually, I had some real concerns while I've been listening to it, yes. There's something we really need help, maybe we need to get a list of what they are, what kind of, you know, home inspection, holy cow, what they generate. And they just come in and, so I think maybe we do need to, so I'd like to see.
Is that motion?
I think Mr. O'Leary had a valid point today, too, with the utility board, he, who's going to lease this? How are we going to enforce it? I can see Jim's point, but I, I can see us chasing our tails around trying to figure out who's in town.
The only way to enforce it is the ones that want to come forth. That's the only way, so. But if, if somebody does come, owns up to it, you know, they're going to be paying the business license, we'll get some revenue there, the ones that are coming in under cover, dark, and doing stuff on the weekends, they're not going to get nothing for it.
And we're not getting anything now anymore.
Exactly. So, and to enforce it, it's hard. I mean, you drive around town seeing guys selling food out the back of their truck. You know, the law enforcement, a lot more important than you do sometimes, but it's a start, if somebody was to be honest.
I can see with the food trucks and stuff, actually, general car, gone down, where somebody's inspecting and stuff. I would, I think, I would, I would move to go forward and set up a structure and really be specific on what services would be exempt from landfill. There's probably, you can't, you know, it's, but they want to generate some garbage they need to pay like that. I think some inspection stuff, different items like that, I hadn't thought about that before, it's totally imposed, it's way to be, I think they won't be paying. But they're coming in, you know, in a service, they're going on whatever, that's pretty steep, and they want it.
You have a motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second, I'm allowed to.
Sure.
I really think the key word there, too, is a business that's not available, need to, we need to really focus on that.
Well, I have a little thought on that as well. I mean, if there's someone in town who does have, for example, the home inspection example, you know, if there's someone in town who has a storefront and is doing that and paying landfill, they're not, someone coming in from out of town is still spending a hundred and twenty dollars on gas every time they come up to do that. It's, I, I just don't know that there's the disparity, this.
Disparity?
Disparity. It's been a long day. That, it seems there, I mean, we are isolated, I don't think anybody is going to be getting off scot-free one way or the other if they're having to come to the town. I, I agree, I think there's something we need to do about this.
There was some discussion on that, Mr. O'Leary. And it got to, well, not to the point of, it was brought up, here you are, you're going to clog on a house, you need a house appraisal, and what they told me this morning, there was nobody in town to do that.
Right.
So you're sitting there wanting to get moved in your house, you call somebody up that comes to town, and what have they, honestly, give you that? And then, and you go, hey, you know, I charged you four hundred dollars, I got charged with a six hundred dollar landfill bill for the whole year, thank you very much, I'm going back to you.
Right. No, I, I agree, and it's, it's pretty distasteful when you come to try and do the right thing, you can slack with that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm all for this. We have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion on this side? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Michelle, what was your vote on that?
It's a aye, that's fine.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to item four, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, determination of future landfill tree pile processing procedure with option to include, but not limited to retaining the current tree chipper contractor, purchasing a tree chipper machine, or obtaining a burn permit from Nevada Department of Environmental Protection. Do you want to offer some, do you want to?
This went in front of the utility board this morning, and they recommended to go out and see a burn permit, and I agree with them. Just say just so much more, love, my chicken. We really got a problem with the chipper because we can't, the guys can't see on metal in the pile, too, and it just tears the teeth up, and it's a huge expense. The bill you have in front of you is for about quarter of the pile, if you're done, so it would be expensive to chip that whole pile.
Would be very long to break it up.
Um, it'd be better to break it up in smaller.
That's what I think.
Little piles and burn them a little.
Think the dozer pushing into smaller piles, and do it over a couple of three days or whatever, get the permit for a week.
It's free permit. Yeah, yeah. But the bond's out of the fire, but the bond fired the landfill.
And they, they both. I'll entertain a motion on this side.
I'll approve for a burn permit.
Do I have a second? Does there any, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Carry it and so ordered. Item five, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, direction to city staff to issue a request for proposals for metal recycling as well as other recyclable materials.
This also, they go in front of the utility board this morning, um, it's kind of fifty-fifty, I guess, um, they, they did recommend to go out for a RFP, but they also were asking about the legality of having the lead man at the landfill go out and select someone to come in and push that pile.
So based on the numbers I got today, um, how much we'd be paying for, you know, annually, we wouldn't need to do an advertisement for it. So if we could actually just go out and select somebody, we wouldn't even do an RFP for it, too, because it's less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year, so.
There have been times when we shifted for about fifty, but that's letting it save up for a year or two.
That's what I've heard, yeah. So the statute talks about sort of if the annual cost exceeds twenty-five and then fifty is the other threshold, fifty threshold is full advertisement, you know, go out to bid, uh, the twenty-five threshold means you have to send out RFPs to potential folks that can do that. So, you know, if, if we're inclined, and if we want to sort of split the baby on that one, we can put it up to, um, if it, I mean, I think the estimate that I've seen is we're going to be well over twenty-five thousand, so we can just select whoever that.
So I, I'm kind of torn, um, I, I don't know where your guys' thoughts are. It would eliminate a little bit of pressure off our, our lead man out there and, uh, I can be a little more transparent, but we would probably hopefully make more money having the landfill for doing so, with your thoughts.
I, I think, you know, the pile gets so large, and we're pushing it right now, you know, we're taking a lot of manpower and equipment time to push it, to save it. We get into a manageable estimate, it'd be out of here quicker, a lot less time, manpower pushing it, rooting tires, when they push with the dozer, or with the robot tire or the loader, I think it's, in the long run, we'll, to look better, you know, it'd just be a lot cheaper, saving the franchise fees and all that, contract fees. Give it a go faster.
I'll entertain a motion on this side from the board.
Well, since it's legal, I, I am going to approve to have the lead man take this duty over and not go out for an RFP.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on this side? I, I really think that's the best way to move, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it and so ordered. Item six, Board Member, City Public Works Supervisor, Craig Craft, discussion for possible action, approval to replace terrorist well roof in at a cost not to exceed six thousand four hundred dollars.
That's pretty salt, it's not to hit that, terrorist, um, well, the roof is leaking, so we need to.
Do we already have somebody, a proposal ready to go for that?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Brown, for the utility board as well, they, they made the recommendation to let R and R have it. We're already waiting for a R and R quote, but since the R and R numbers are already publicly in the packet, I thought it would be better to let R and R in there.
I'll entertain a motion on this side.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it and so ordered, that's mine. Item seven, Board Members, Public Works Supervisor, Craig Craft, discussion for possible action, approval to purchase a PLC upgrade for approximately thirty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents, and a SCADA subscription to seventy-five dollars per month for the wastewater treatment plant.
Since you purchased or purchasing the new computers, it would be just to make them a, a plant more efficient, and all of them would be just giving up on the SCADA system and bringing up the date.
That this was part of the recommendation, right?
This is computer equipment?
It's David, yes.
David, okay.
I'll entertain a motion on this side. Oh, yeah?
No, I'm just asking a good question. Are we going to get a new computer at the plant?
They're ordering.
And this will be, goes into this computer?
It doesn't go into the computer, it's equipped, it runs the operation of the plant.
But they'll be able to use the computer, too?
Yes.
They can use their phone and everything.
Yes, then it'll, it'll be internet-based, where the computer from there will be able to get and see it operated and interacted.
Okay, so it ties together, the computer that you ordered?
Yes. So like, if something goes wrong there, you know, they can see it on the computer, they can see it on the phone, just like they do with.
We've actually been really lucky running without this system and not having a complete failure somewhere, not knowing about it until the next day, and being big trouble. So this will have all the hangover, switching on, and then the crew's going, something, those eight water barrels, they don't want to die.
Any other questions of the public works of the way? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it and so ordered. Thank you. Uh, with that, we move on to item nine, items for discussion, possible action, only the city council to consent to agenda. Are there any questions on the bills or the municipal? And we've received a lot of comments, we're excited about that.
Yes, May sixteen, June ten, June thirteen, June twenty-sixth.
And twenty-seventh.
Do you have one for the twenty-seventh?
Oh, correct, yes, and the twenty-seventh.
Nothing about.
And I was asked on May sixteen, so I'm standing on that one.
And I was about to say twenty, twenty-sixth.
These are all the four, I'm just, I think, so do I, as well?
We have to, no, you don't, you don't have to.
We don't have to, no.
It's really about spotting errors, and if you feel that you adequately spot errors, you're not good.
And, and for the record, I listened to the audio as I reviewed my notes for all of these meetings, and they were all accurate.
I kind of prefer them to miss, because an agenda like, and I should have had everyone on call, except the ten and that twenty-seven, so.
It's the same, and there's not a number here, but it's.
And you can do it, but you were, that's a, yeah.
Move your proof attention, if any.
Yes.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? That, that's including.
Well, I got a question.
Okay.
I've gone over the bills prior to the treasurer leaving town with City Park also, and managing all my questions, my satisfaction, I'd like to, but also the hidden burden, accounting charges are dropping significantly as we're getting everybody up to speed, so that's good, one day we will not be paying that kind of money for outside county funding.
Any other questions on the bills and the amendments?
Do you still have a second?
Do you still have a second? So, yeah, Michelle, second, okay. Any further discussion on these items? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it and so ordered. Uh, we move on to new business. One, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, review, discussion and possible approval of proposed, proposed city of Ely organizational charges. And I will note that I did get a correction from, um, the municipal judge, that they aren't both labeled, um, or titled court clerks, one is a senior court clerk and one is a, is a junior court clerk.
Yes.
Just a court clerk. We have senior court clerk and just, um, so that's, that is a correction that we've done, and if you guys had any other notes or corrections on there that we didn't make on us, this was kind of Jennifer and, and Jen, and Jenath, just that were on this, so.
It was.
Fire department?
No, no, not the police.
That's the one I felt the most vague about, but I think they, I got.
It was where, where would a slot be, I mean, even in the present time, for HR?
Oh, and that was the other thing I noticed, um, we do need to, I should probably note on here that the city treasurer is also the HR.
It's the one that was right.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, at, at that time, if we get Broom and everything, it may be a separate department, we modify that.
And we do have, yeah, oh, yeah, this is probably modifiable, because there are some, um, for example, we have budgeted for a people clerk, but we don't have one, so I didn't put one on there. If we hire one, we can amend just the organizational chart. I did note about HR in the notes down here, um, that I think she should be labeled as well, the city treasurer slash HR director.
Yeah, that's, again, as long as that is modified, that's like, right now, you have to find the city treasurer, she's going to, he or she ought to be an HR person, so that's flexible with it.
Any notes, questions, or corrections on there?
I guess we have kind of a silly holdout. So if I, if I wanted to talk to the city, are you willing to give your permission?
No. Um, I, the intent being, we, we could put a note here, I mean, the city council should feel free to seek information, um, from any city employee, the intent being that it's a, it's a directorial organizational chart, so the people at the bottom go to their supervisor, the people at the top go down at the next, the next level there. So we, we're trying to avoid people from the top talking and giving directions to people who already have losses.
Right.
Yeah, this kind of the intent there, but no. If, if there was direction to be given, the intent being that the city council acts as a council and votes and directs in that manner than individual. But if there's information that they need to get, call up the attorney, call up the treasurer, whoever they need to get information, make their decisions, or to impose agenda items.
Yeah, this is an attempt to sort of get around a lot, it's been a lot of, lots of council, folks, the, probably need to be looking at this. What can I change?
Any other questions or concerns? I will entertain a motion with those corrections we discussed.
I'll move.
Those corrections being the relabeling of the court clerk and the relabeling of the city treasurer, including HR, so. We have a motion, do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it and so ordered. Uh, item two, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, approval of first reading of ordinance seven-two-seven, bill number twenty-nineteen dash ten, an ordinance that may be ratified with title one of the city, of the city code of the city of Ely, requiring the city council to create a code of conduct for its members prescribing that violation of the code for, of conduct constitutes cause within the meeting of NRS two sixty-six, dot two forty, eliminating appointing department heads and creating protocol for liaison appointments, prescribing that no city official may be appointed to a department if such appointment implicates a conflict of interest, and adding a severability clause. The point here was to clean up some of the labeling in the city code, which doesn't really jive with NRS, and then also the point being that the city council, as, um, we've dug into the issues over the last three months, really doesn't fall under the employee procedures manual, they're kind of a creature of their own construct, so the city council gets to make and set their own laws and punishments, the NRS, um, provides for that, and we just wanted to make sure our code aligned with that and encourage that the city council do that for themselves.
And I would say that the other thing I've seen here, in both the copies that I've read, only changes were made subsequent to the printing of them. Okay, have they?
Yep, they're in the stack.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Just want to make sure everybody has.
Grab two.
Yeah. So there actually are six departments, as opposed to five.
Just kidding, listen, Eric.
Um, if anybody has any questions, I, I will ask some questions in the discussion before the motion can go on.
Where did the building, excuse me, the building inspector call in this?
The building inspector is, uh, an official appointed by the mayor, so he comes under city administration. I believe that. I guess I'm wrong.
You can put him wherever you want. Yeah, that's, that's really more of an org chart than, you know, if you think about it, right? I mean, they, these are just sort of the big swaths of what you can do.
Um, city officials are usually appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council, so I believe they come under city administration. So that includes the city building official, or the treasurer, um, required to municipal work yet.
I, I have lots of questions on this, lots of notes, you know, where it says the city council agreed that NRS two sixty-six, two forty, may punish its members for disorderly conduct. Look the definition of disorderly conduct in NRS two oh three dash zero one zero two, two oh three one one nine, it crimes against public peace. So, if, as long as we're in this meeting, I feel the way I read this, you can look at punishing a member of the thing, but if we're not in order, that's the way I look at that right there. I think there's some real, if you look at definitions, I'm, I'm having a little bit of trying to understand where, where this is all coming from. You know, the, your chief executor of the city, the, you know, the mayor is, and then again, pardon if we're stumbling through some of these notes here, it goes back to the disciplinary, you know, it's under NRS two sixty-six, two hundred, two hundred, the mayor is presiding officer, number one, the mayor. Number two, shall prescribe over the city council when in session, and shall preserve order and decorum among the members of the council as provided by ordinance. Preserve order to keep, the way I read that, safe from the public coming after us, you know, you can't say that to him.
Sure.
And the decorum, that's part of Robert's rule of order definition, you know, so you go through this and, again, proper behavior, due to order, decorum is requisite in a public place in order to permit all persons to enjoy their rights, and you give an example of being in church or so forth. So I, I'm having a tough time on a couple of these items, or on what we're trying to go with, with punishing its members. I could see, they'd sit together, we're going to punish him because, whatever reason, and in the background, you don't know, they're going to bring somebody else in by mayoral appointment to be the next councilman, that's something, I just, probably I read too much in these addresses, I was telling you, I'm not a lawyer, go read them. So, again, and that was on the, on the first page of that thing there, and then I got into, uh, because on page two, where we, where we have, the mayor shall be responsible for the administration, we scratched out the department of the city, and again, yeah, I went back in, looked for definition of administration, and, again, uh, start from administration, you know, the process of activity of running the business organization, so then you look down into the government side of administration, in, in action, the action of a manner of controlling or regulating a nation, process for people, and this is under the mayor's description, and you dig a little farther in management, the process of dealing or controlling things or people. Again, I may be reading into this too much, but I just look like, I'm not saying it's happening, but we're leaving ourselves open to that by changing that simple wording of, responsible for the administration of the city. That's what this whole group does. That's what this whole group does here. And then, so going down into C, the administration department, you know, the attorney just answered, you know, where's the building official? The city treasurer's there, and we don't have parking meters at all, so are we going to make a, a change in this here to take the word parking meter out of there? Then down farther in D, you know, the, the appointed liaisons, you need to have something in there that says, appointed department heads, and to ensure employees follow the, the flow chart and the chain of command. You know, we've seen that happen, like I said, in the last three months, somebody down the rank, all of a sudden, there's something being thrown on the city council agenda proposal, and the liaison, the department head person you talk to knew nothing about that, but I think...